This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. We welcome those of you that are here tonight in attendance. We have with us Pastor Michael Mathis of Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation, and we'll say the pledge of allegiance is the following. All please rise.
Oh, Lord God of the universe, we're always grateful for your presence, yet we still extend an invitation for you to be in these sessions. Lord, we ask now, wherever there may be any division or anything, Lord, that is not pleasing, as we call on you, we ask, God, that you would forgive us and remove it. And, Lord, we're just so grateful for your loving kindness, your mercy, and how you have continued to bless this town of Hope Mills with increase, and a lot of measure of peace, that so many things have not and do not happen in Hope Mills that are happening in so many other places, God. We thank you for that. We thank you for the board, the heads of protection, that you put around the perimeters of this town, and we continue to ask you, God, to continue to do this, because we need you. And as we give thanks to you, Lord, we are always grateful to stay in line with what you ask us to do, and praying for the leadership that is over us. And we thank you, God, for Mayor Jackie Warner and her family and her willingness, Lord, to lead, oh, Lord, and even to have reverence and respect for you, in that she would allow prayer in these sessions, God. We thank you for her. We thank you for her life, and we continue to pray a hedge of protection around her and her family, and we bind the evilness, not only with her, God, but the other board members and the other staff, God, that there are mindful, that there are people that don't like good, and they have their own motives and reasons, God, for inflicting division and pain. And so, God, we trust you. You're the greater power, and we thank you for that. And we wouldn't be safe if we didn't have Chief and the rest of his angels of protection around us, God, to protect this town and the citizens. We thank you for Chief. We thank you for him coming. And, oh, Lord, we ask, God, that you would keep angels and camp behind the rest of his soldiers, God, as they continue to put their lives in harm's way. We ask you, God, we need you so much, especially in times like this, and we continue, God, to call on you to make the exemption with that tax thing that the mayor mentioned to us in that last session, God. We need the finances, God, that your will would be done, and this town will continue to grow. We pray for a continued unity and respect for one another. Now, Lord, the agenda has been set, and so, God, we pray for your wisdom. We ask, God, that you would enlighten the board and others, God, to do that which you desire in this town. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
I gotta hand myself. I gotta hand myself.
At this time, do we have any deletions or additions to our agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of them. If we could remove Presentation 3A from the agenda, remove from Old Business, Item A, remove from the Consent Agenda, Item C, and move the closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A6 to discuss personnel matters before the official comments.
Okay, so the Item C from Consent Agenda, you want that moved to New Business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we have some changes to our agenda. We're deleting Presentation, Item 3A. We're deleting Item 6A. We're also moving Item out of Consent Agenda, C, to New Business, and we're doing our closed session instead of the end. The closed session will be following approval of the agenda. So, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with those changes?
Make a motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, we beg your patience. We'll be going to the front conference room for a closed session, and we'll be back as quickly as possible.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A6 to discuss personnel matters.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor will move to the back. Thank you. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to seal the minutes of the closed session until such time as the release of the information would no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session. Further, no action was taken.
Have a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. This evening, our town manager, Scott Mazeros, has officially resigned, and we have accepted his resignation, and at this time, we are appointing our Economic Development Planner, Chancellor McLaughlin, in the interim manager position until such time as we can go through the process to hire a town manager. So, we at this time would ask Chancellor if you'll assume your seat over there by the attorney, and we appreciate you being willing to take on this responsibility. Next, we have public comments, and on public comments, we have Jason Kennedy.
Jason Kennedy, 3619 Sugarcane Circle. A little nervous, I've never done this before. Madam Mayor and Town Board, thank you for allowing me to speak. This is about the chapel and historic preservation. I travel, and I've been to Rome. I was surprised when the tour guide told me that Rome looks like every other city, except that there's like a 3,000-year-old structure here and there, and she was right. And in the heart of the city, among apartment complexes and regular businesses, there's an out-of-place historic structure. And likewise, when I was in London, taking a tour, the guide said, "Now, you're gonna have to imagine what it looked like back then, because it's all changed." Here's a picture of what it looked like. Historic structures in London had been tore down to make way for the shiny and new. And I've been to Boston, and the State House, where they read aloud the Declaration of Independence for the first time, stands alone, and it's surrounded by all these modern buildings, and it looks out of place, and it's still holding on for dear life. Where's the other buildings in that historic district? And they're gone, and they're lost to time. And the result is the accumulation of their council's decisions. I've lived in Savannah, Georgia, where they have a thriving historic district, and millions from all over the world come to Savannah to experience its beauty and enjoy its historic landmarks, because they were preserved. And in the '70s and the '80s, their council faced the same decisions that you face today. And they've been, they could have easily tore down their buildings, but Savannah's Historic Preservation Committee, who had a foresight and an understanding of the importance of their structures, worked together with the council, and now their city boasts a living history like no other. You know, preserving Hope Mills requires a vision, and it requires a long game. Short-sightedness is the opposite of the long game, and it's really a threat to your history. The decisions for tomorrow are made today, right here in this boardroom. And if your thoughts side with casting out historic items like 100-year-old pews to make way for zumba classes or theater troupe, then you're already heading in the opposite direction of preservation and in danger of losing precious history. Ask yourself, what is your long-term vision for this town? Not just during your terms or the next terms, but overall, many decades from now. And may I suggest you can do both. You can do both. You can preserve your historic landmarks while moving this town forward. It doesn't have to be either or. It can be both. Zumba classes in a theater space is great. You can build a versatile building to hold these functions, while you fight to preserve your history for future generations. Lastly, I'll leave you with this. It's a quirky saying, but it's true nevertheless, and you've probably heard it before, and it is. They are not making historic anymore. They are not making historic anymore. Once you lose your historic landmarks, they are gone forever. And thank you again for listening.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we have moved Item C from our Consent Agenda. Is there anything else from the Consent Agenda you would like to be moved, or do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. We do not have anything under Old Business, under New Business, Item A. Consideration of Accepting the Proposal from CHA Consulting and authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute an agreement for an amount not to exceed $131,385 in design contingency of $13,139 for the provision of professional design services related to construction documents with the Hope Mills Sports Complex. I'll turn it over to Mr. Morrison.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, the design portion of this project is actually the first phase in the development of the ball fields beyond the master plan. The master plan is completed, and so, the next step in the development process is to get construction documents that we will in turn use to bid the project out in the near future. I will say that the price of the design is well within industry standard of between 7% and 14% of construction cost. So, I think their fees are reasonable, and it's in line with what industry standards are as far as percentage-wise of the construction costs. With that, I'll take any of your questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Madam Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
There was a gentleman who lived in my neighborhood, which we're gonna say hearsay, that was telling me this week that we only plan on to build one ball field.
That's not correct. So, you all don't have the RFQ, but the RFQ that the design firms responded to, so, they're gonna do a schematic design that shows all four ball fields. It's also gonna show infrastructure and whatever entrance that we agree on is gonna come up with golf field. From that, we're gonna get a cost estimate, and based on what the cost estimate is, we're gonna have them to design, do full construction documents for what a Phase 1 of the project is. And I don't know what the Phase 1 is, because we're gonna bring that back to you all and let you all know what the cost estimate is, based on the schematic and input from, you know, the public. And so, we'll present the schematic back to the board, and we'll take direction from the board as to what that Phase 1 is gonna look like. It could be all four baseball fields, if it's within the budget. It could be two. We just don't know that just yet. But the first order of business is to get a full schematic car line plan and get cost estimates, and then find out what we can afford, so.
Thank you.
Madam, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Commissioner Mitchell is making a motion to authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with CHA Consulting and corporate for professional design services for an amount not to exceed $131,385 for the provision of professional services related to the Hope Mills Sports Complex Phase 1 project. I'll second it.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Okay. Can you add?
I will add, with a design contingency of $13,139.
Okay, so now, then it's approved. Thank you. All right, the next thing we have on our agenda is consideration of a change to the Town of Hope Mills Board Policy Rule Number 15, and... Anybody have any questions about what that is?
That's the one we discussed the other night, right?
Yep, that's the one we discussed the other night. And this is the, if you look under your tab, the change to it, it says, "If a member of the public wishes to request that the Board of Commissioners include an item on its regular meeting agenda, he or she must submit the request to the appropriate department head. Depending on the subject matter, department heads are encouraged to vet items from the public through any committees deemed appropriate. If the department head finds it to be a reasonable request and advantageous to the town taxpayers, they will deliver it to the town clerk by the deadline specified in Rule 13A2. The Board of Commissioners is not obligated to place an item on the agenda merely because such a request has been received." And that's the change. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, motion to approve a consideration of Hope Mills Board Policy Change to Rule 15.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next thing on our agenda is consideration of acceptance of a request from Mauricio Melgar Andrade to annex 1.2 acres known as Park Garden Court and Approve Resolution Number R2023-04. And this is just... Okay. Do we have a motion to move forward?
Mayor, make a motion to accept the annexation petition in the DOT Resolution R2023-04 directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition received under GS 168-58 will be needed.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. The next item on our agenda is consideration of approval of SCM Sabre Program and McManus App and allow town manager to execute contracts. This is the amount of $42,000 and is included in the 2223 state budget allocation. And, Dr. McCray, you asked this to be moved. Do you have a question about this?
Actually, Commissioner Scorola. A couple apologies.
Tab 3, I think.
Yeah, yeah, that's why. Went right past it. I'm actually going and having questions for it, I'm sorry.
What?
That's why we can't have nice things.
So, a motion to approve, right?
Yes. Okay, so I have a motion to approve. All those, have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next, we have reminders. On February 8th, we have Historic Preservation Committee meeting at Parks and Recreation Center. February 20th, we have our next board meeting, committee liaison reports. At this time, Commissioner Marley, do you have anything?
I don't have anything. Ms. Scorola was at the last meeting. If she would like to give a report, or we have, I know at least one member of the committee in the audience, if they would like to stand up and speak, I would have no problem with that.
Ms. Reeves? Yes.
I don't have the minutes, the last meeting. I haven't been to the meeting yet.
Need to come to the mic. Come up to the microphone, so they can, everyone at home can hear you.
I do not have the meeting, the minutes, yet from the very, very last meeting that we had. Not the special meeting, but the one before. Basically, we were discussing about including more activities to incorporate, like cemetery preservation or beautification into the HPC. I know that we have a town budget, you know, and it's maintained by certain, I guess, the public works and whatnot, but just some beautification things that we could do. We would like to work more with the cemeteries and the town services to, and even, I'm not really a techno person, but we do have a really technologically advanced person, Denise Gaskins, and she was talking about how you could put like the codes, and you could actually map out your cemeteries, map out your graves, have your little code thing. People could come and check out the graves, you know, the graves and things like that. So, we were just, that meeting was basically discussing that, also what to do with the artifacts from the chapel, and we're still kinda stymied by exactly. We're hoping that some can be incorporated either into the chapel itself, or maybe move those pews up into the back there with a commemorative plaque, about where they came from and a little bit of history. So, that was basically kinda it, just maybe some branching out, finishing the inventory, and working with the artifacts as they were left in the chapel.
We also talked about, and it was a brief, and we're gonna go into it more depth, because with the history of Hope Mills, and I love a good ghost story.
Yes.
About, so, one of the things that I was like, let's do a haunted Hope Mills. And with all these historical buildings, you know, maybe ghost storytelling, or, you know, people are gonna think I'm weird, but I'm sure one of these houses around here is haunted, so I'm sure we can get some kind of thing, and it, you know, it's something that captures, you know, everyone's attention, and it's not just a, you know, so, that was something I was excited about, haunted Hope Mills.
Yeah, we thought about that, and I had actually, last year, I had put a request out, like, if you have a ghost story, a good ghost story, and I actually did get, like, several responses from that, and I had been, in my spare time, writing up the ghost stories. So, it's interesting, the amount of people that have had paranormal experiences, or kinda interesting experiences, you know, in itself. And that would make a nice little historic booklet, perhaps, for us to put together, but it's kind of appropriate, you know, for the season, but it still would add some little historical reference. Hey, this happened, this happened.
It's still in the early phases, so it's, but it's something that I was like...
I'm sure Roy on Trey Street can help you out with that.
There's a lot of places locally that, yeah, so.
And the piano in my guest house.
Okay. Oh, yes. We can save that story. Save that story. Don't tell that story now.
But yes, that's what we discussed, basically.
Question for you. It has been asked if the Historical Committee would start recording history now, that we need documentation, pictures of things and events that occur in the Town of Hope Mills that could be listed, that a lot of this, even from former Mayor Deese's book, in there are pictures and descriptions, and there's things have changed in Hope Mills. People keep reminding us, but there's no actual written documentation. So, the stories are being told, but they're being told not as probably as accurate as they could be if we started documenting the timelines and stuff. So, that's something that we felt like would be well worthwhile, because we aren't recording...
We aren't, and it's very interesting, when we went out to update the Historical District review of the properties, like, a lot of people don't know it, but from the last time it was done in '85, addresses have changed, buildings have been removed. We had to go look up deeds to ensure that 524 was really 5708 now. So, yeah, you're right. Since even 1985, 1990, there's been a lot of changes, just in the Historic District itself, not just in the town, but in the whole thing. And yes, and I think we need more. We talked about maybe doing it on the webpage, but no, I think we need something tangible in hand, so that, you know, 25 years from now, it's there, and maybe we could do it digitally.
Yes.
I'm not a digital person. I like to take a paper book, but yes, I agree with the board 100%. I would like to speak with people like Mr. Laing, who've lived here their whole lives, or others, Pat Hall, other people, you, Madam Mayor, that know the history better than I do, and have seen the changes, and record that, and maybe even make it like sort of an addendum to Eddie's book, Mr. Deese's book.
Good idea.
You know, yes, he did it up to this point. Well, what happened, you know, after 1950? So, yeah, I'm in total agreement with that, and that is certainly something. We've got a meeting Wednesday. I can put that on the agenda for us to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
There's a historian that is new to the area, but I would like to connect you with probably like a different perspective, a fresh perspective would be good, but he has said that he would definitely be interested in helping out, but I...
I would love to, yeah. I mean, you know, I think the more people that contribute, that just enriches it and makes it, gives more details, what you may know, I may not know, put it all together, and you really have something to enrich the community with.
What about y'all setting up a web page or website where individuals can come in and post their own individual stories that they can share about the history of?
We actually have a webpage. Parks and Rec gratefully nicely started one for us when we were doing the reunion.
Okay.
And it is active. The problem is, there's like four or five Hope Mills historic pages out there, and so, you've really gotta know which one are you, which one is the official one. And that's something, maybe I could talk with Megan Hawkins or Megan Mearness about and say, hey, is there a way we can specialize that page?
And then, some of those pages were run by citizens.
Correct.
And so, we can't, it's gonna be a pain to try to get rid of.
What about the new, the new?
The new page?
I'm sure the other ones say new on them too, when they were stopped.
But yeah, I mean, there needs to be a way to differentiate what is the official Hope Mills page that's sanctioned by the, you know, the town, and what is just one that perhaps a citizen started or whatever. And not that some of the citizen ones aren't really good. There are a couple that are really, really good. Maybe we could get in touch with the citizens and combine information.
That's a good idea.
That's an idea. But yes, please, if you know someone that would like to delve into history, we would be more than amenable to work with, you know, anyone to create some sort of document, and start working on that and publishing publications of history, aspects of history. Any other questions or concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, Commissioner Mitchell?
Who? I'm just kidding.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, we haven't had an Appearance Committee meeting, did we? We had a joint meeting with the Historical Preservation Committee, and they pretty much talked about having a joint meeting to prepare for this coming year events, decorating the chapel, and what other input they can do jointly. The RULAC, of course, they have a meeting coming up next week, and the new interim town manager, Mr. McLaughlin, was just telling me that I think RULAC is gonna come here and do maybe a presentation.
Yes, RULAC reached out to us today, expressed an interest in coordinating with the town, and so, we have set it up for them to attend that, planning a gathering on Thursday. They helped let us know what their expectations are, and then we opened the door for them to attend our thing regularly if we have a project in the pack to actually affect RULAC. So, myself and Commissioner Mitchell were already staffed at Commissioner's liaison for RULAC, and so, we're just strengthening that connection.
Thank you.
All righty. Commissioner Scorola, Veterans Affairs?
So, we had our meeting, what day was it? The 26th. We had our last meeting the 26th. We're still looking to figure out who we, we have an acting chairperson for our committee. We're still looking to put someone in the chairperson spot. Where our last meeting basically was trying to hash out what kind of events we wanna go over and do this upcoming year. One of the ideas was about a larger-scale field of flags versus the small miniature flags. So, we were getting some quotes on full-size flags and that kinda thing. It was just basically, it was like a meeting of the minds, so nothing was set in stone, so there wasn't really any, nothing solid to report on yet. so there wasn't really any, nothing solid to report on yet.
Mayor Protea?
I'm sorry, my parts are reg, uh, minutes are, I highlighted them, so they're gonna be a little long, but informative, and then I'll do the short one for the Hope Mills Prime Movers. The chapel restroom, the contractor is ninety-five percent complete with the construction and has been granted a certificate of occupancy. The installation of the playground has began and is fifty, fifty percent complete. The playground will be completed in early March twenty-twenty-three. The splash pad equipment has arrived and the construction has been delayed to early February due to weather, and these minutes were typed up on the thirtieth, so. Heritage Park, the design team is a hundred percent complete with the construction documents. Basketball court renovations, the mural is complete, a ceiling was supposed to have been applied on this week and given three days before, took, it has to set three days before anyone can use it, and a ribbon cutting is planned for later this month. The Golf U Sports Complex, we just talked about that, basketball season has started. They are taking registration for spring sports to include baseball, indoor soccer, softball and wrestling. That will end on February the twenty-eighth. There is a fifty-five-plus Valentine luncheon on Friday, February tenth. They do have six weeks of specialty camps set up, and Eastern Hope Mills is March twenty-fifth. Trucks and Stuff Event will be on May sixth. Pet Fest is on May twentieth, and it's not a town event. Memorial Day Ceremony is May twenty-ninth, and our Fourth of July Parade is set to be on Saturday, July first. Municipal Park concessions will be advertised in spring, early spring twenty-twenty-three, and they are seeking vendors to provide concessions during normal business hours at the park. The town lake will be advertised in early spring, seeking vendors to provide watercraft rentals, and the guy from this golf club, he did present, and we also talked about looking into long-term leasing or outright purchasing vacant buildings and then transforming them into rental spaces, because we are running out of spaces for our Parks and Rec. And the historical, when it comes to the chapel, they did talk about moving some of the, the pews so that the church, we spent two hundred and forty thousand dollars in renovations, and they would like for it to be used as much as possible, and that was a unanimous vote. That'd be, oh, and Hope Mills, that's all from our Parks and Rec Committee. Prime Movers, they are doing a blood drive at Millstone on March eighteenth from ten to, ten to one. They are delivering the Valentine Day cards at eleven-thirty on February fourteenth at the Harmony House, and they will start highlighting Black-owned businesses for Black History Month this month, March ninth, Mr. Gurley, they, they want to work with the Arms House to serve meals, and they will be having Family Fun Day again on May thirteenth from ten to one. And that will conclude all of my reports, Madam Mayor. We always ask questions about these things, I was trying to get y'all.
Kind of get them in there.
Madam Mayor, I do have one more thing, but it's not with the committee. This, uh, this weekend is Cars and Coffee at the Millstone Theater Parking Lot at nine o'clock in the morning, so come on out, you can see a whole bunch of cars, Jeeps will be there, I will be there, my happy self. It's a good time, they have the cupcake place that opens and they give, you know, we can buy coffee, coffee from there, it's magically delicious, that's all I have.
Okay. Mid-Carolina Council actually will meet in March. FAMPO, we met, we did it virtually, and from FAMPO, which is the, talking about D O T and, and the processes that we're going through right now. I two ninety-five is all funded and on target to keep moving, so you're gonna probably see more things happening out on Camden Road, and you're also gonna see that they're gonna, the next leg, they're working on the next leg of it, but it is already impacting us. If you go out Golf View Road, you'll be able to see what's happening, it's also easy to get lost out there because of the way the circles send you off, and you actually take the circle to hit I two ninety-five. The other thing that we did discuss was let dates or when we might start Golf View and Rockfish Road, and where we are now, you're already seeing evidence of things happening because they're removing homes, and they're also starting, getting ready to move power lines and utility lines. And as far as a start date, the holdup right now is the purchase of the remaining properties and right-of-ways. You've got some that are in sort of a legal, legal scenario with working with lawyers, and that is holding up the purchase. So they do make fair market value for your par, for the property, but some people think their property is worth more than that, so they're having to go through the, the court process. But either way, you're seeing that things happening, it may take a year, it just depends. They're, they're, they gave a date of actually June twenty-twenty-four, but the goal was to actually start this summer. It's just the holdup now is property, and that could change. The other thing that I was involved with this past week was Pastor's Coalition. We do have a pastor, our chairman is Wesley Holmes, who is at Church of God, and he is now going to New Bern, so we do have to have a new, and the new pastor that's, the chairman is Tim Gore, and he works out of Timberlake Church of God. We also had three new pastors that joined. We have our pastor logs signed up for the whole year for invocations, and we're gonna be rotating some new pastors in, as we do have some new that joined. We did have the Mayor's Coalition on Friday, the Mayor's Coalition met in Linden, this was the largest turnout that we've ever had. General Donahue and Colonel Wilcox came from Fort Bragg, they presented information about the name change, they also talked about some plans they have for, as we change into Fort Liberty, and they explained why. They're gonna have either, probably Colonel Wilcox, we're gonna invite them to come to the board and make a presentation to our board and our community. They also had a request that they're working with the police departments because they wanted to find out ways that they can make connections, so I suggested that we, our police chief, who has been very open to meeting with people and, and outside of the community and the things you're doing for drug awareness, that's their concern right now, is venting on the things going on. And then also, they, they're, they're gonna do what's called Sunset March to Liberty, and this is something they brought from, from another area, but what they'll be doing is they'll reckon, they're gonna conduct half-mile sunset march, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to honor the service and sacrifice of service members. The march will start at Honeycutt Liberty Trail and move along the trail and ending in the vicinity where Randolph and Butler intersect. The veteran or, or will render honors in front, in front of the monument to be constructed. Veterans are support group ownership to manage and sponsor, being if they have the capability, but the main thing is, what they're gonna try to do is try to get the acceptance of the new name, realizing that it's going to take some time, but they felt it was most appropriate that, that Liberty was the name, because it's, anytime anybody talks about Fort Bragg, it's, they've always been the one that's been out there supporting our freedoms and our liberties. But we're gonna have him come here because we have such a large population of veterans and active duty, that maybe this would be a good location for them to give some more information about, especially those that have retired here that aren't giving it up. They don't, you know, they don't want the name changed, but it, it is gonna happen, and it was very informative. We also had P W C there, and, and they spoke in reference to the fact that the rates probably have to go up because of material costs, but the most important thing was that we had the representatives from the county commissioners, and those of you that have been seeing little whiffs of information about how we get our sales tax distribution and that the possibility of Hope Mills losing almost two million dollars if they changed Ad Valorem. It is not a done deal, somebody's putting out there that we're, you know, we're gonna be faced with that right away. What we did is we actually presented to Chairman Stewart of the County Commissioners and Vice Chair Glenn Adams, the recommendation from all the mayors, all signed, all nine, that we extend the current agreement for five years. That current agreement then would lock in the way that it's distributed to the different small municipalities, and then what will happen is the county commissioners have to vote on it. So as we move forward, our next meeting, I'm the chairman of the Mayor's Coalition, and the mayor of Eastover is Charles McLaren, is the vice chair. We're meeting with the two representatives from the commissioners on, on February sixteenth, and we'll start the negotiation process. And the only thing that mayors want to negotiate is the timeframe, they don't want to negotiate anything about changing the distribution, they want to encourage them to wait if they want to do Ad Valorem at a time when things aren't so up in the air, like we're getting ready to have property reevaluation, a lot of small towns did not have the luxury of having a tax base that didn't have to raise taxes last time when property evaluations took place. So what they're looking for is give us time to get through these, this period of time. Hopefully, it'll be three years, if not the five years, but I'll keep the town updated and the board updated as we proceed. It's actually the Mayor's Coalition now representing all the communities, and every board voted to approve that inter-local agreement. And that's all I have, I was excited to also find out from Mayor Colvin that they are talking about the fast bus line, and it looks like we're getting closer to that being a reality for Hope Mills too. The city council is the piece that runs the fast bus line as far as the, the direct, fast director, and everybody goes under the city, federal city council, and the opportunity for us to have a bus line is gonna be dependent on them helping fund, and they would actually send a fast bu, bus, extend the route all the way down Hope Mills Road, circle Hope Mills as a sort of an express route, and then the bus then could go from here, if you didn't want to stay in Hope Mills and move around, it would go from here to Cape Valley Hospital, the mall, possibly Fayetteville Tech, probably F S U. So that's all I have from all of mine. Staff comments?
I'm gonna say, just to everybody that's listening, I told you before that I appreciate your comments. I'm gonna proceed to very clear version of transparency. I'm aware that our staff and the board is working with our board.
Thank you, thank you for being willing to take over for us. Any comments? Okay.
Yes, congratulations.
All right, we, we skipped official comments, is there any other comments that you would like to make at this time?
I will make a comment, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We'd like to congratulate Dr. Kenwanna McCray as the, for the F T C C Dean of Arts and Humanities for being named Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission Community Award winner, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Those mouthfuls.
Thank you. Any other comments, official comments?
I'd just like to thank everyone who came out this evening. Keep us on track, you know, see us, think we're doing something wrong, tell one of us so we can try to stay on track. And congratulations to Chancellor for his opportunity to stand up and do the job that he's faced with. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And then we have a motion to.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, got a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, good night.
Good night.
See you the twentieth.